I'd like to welcome everybody tonight to the Chatham County Commission Meeting, June 30th, 2025. We're going to open up the public forum. If anybody has filled out a sheet and has not turned it in, please do so. Call your name. You'll have three minutes to speak to the Commission. I'll have a timer up here. Just watch that. You'll see it turn red. You'll have one minute. First on the list is Mr. James Thigpen.
Good evening to the Commissioners. I hope you're having a pleasant evening. I appreciate you giving us the opportunity to speak. This is a matter of a 4.2 acre lot on Sears Road. I live on Sears Road about 100 yards from this lot. And the property is 4.2 acres. And the owner wants to subdivide this lot to make two, 2.1 acres. My understanding is that for a lot to conform, it has to be at least three acres. You have to have at least three acres to build a house on. And so this would go from a conforming lot to a non-conforming lot if it's subdivided to 2.1 acres. So there's a lot of traffic on Sears Road. It's not just the people that live on Sears Road. It's East Sears Road, West Sears Road, Old Charlotte Pike going towards Sam's Creek, and it's Apache Trail, Old Sam's Creek. There are a lot of houses in there and a lot of, lot of traffic. People that cut through Sears Road to go down to Edge to get on, to get on the interstate to go to Nashville. So it's not just the people that live on Sears Road. It's lots or traffic. There's hundreds of houses. And that is in narrow, the hurricane curve at the bottom of the hill that turns creek. And I have actually been satisfied at that hurricane curve. If you're going to be, most likely it's going to be at that hurricane curve. It's a blind curve. The rocks are up this high. You cannot see. But right there, down from this particular lot, there's about a 75 yard stretch of the road that's not wide enough for two cars to pass unless one car gets over into the grass. It's just, there's just not enough pavement there. So adding more and more traffic to that road will not do anything for safety. So if, if, if you have to have three acres to build a house, which is what I'm being told by number two, then I see no reason to change this. I'm opposed to subdividing the lot.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Ms. Lee Carroll?
Good evening. My name is Lee Carroll. I live at 4445 Sears Road. I'm opposed to this spot zoning request for a number of reasons. Not the least of which is, once you open that door, then you can't imagine how many more requests are going to come to you for more and more of these special exceptions. I don't understand how adding a second house to this small space brings it closer to conformity, but that's apparently what Commissioner Lovell is telling me. I look forward to the conversation because I don't understand how you take a non-conforming lot and add extra homes to it to bring it more in line with conformity. But I look forward to hearing the discussion. I urge you to deny this request.
Thank you. Scott Christ.
Hey, thanks for letting us talk. We live on that road. That, we live on, it's a very narrow road. Most subdivisions on that road. There's no gas lines on that road. White line down another road. Ditches on that road. Wait for some passengers. It's just not, if people live on that road because they want that rural environment, that's why they want it. They don't live on that road because they want subdivisions. They live there because it's being so quiet. No traffic. That's the way their kids, that's the way they want to live. If nobody's opposed to people, they will have them up on their property. Excuse me. Until it affects everybody else. And this affects everybody else. And people like us that live on that road just don't want to see it.
Thank you. David Humphries?
Hi. Thank you for letting me speak to you. I live across the street from this lot up here. I'm opposed to it because the pressure of natural growing is huge. And I understand the development. I can, development will happen if I know what we decide. But two houses is just, is just double the amount that all the rest of us have on Sears Road. I have five acres. If I needed money, could I get a special exception and build four more houses and then sell them all for 600 dollars? No. That would, that would mess up. And then I landscape my property with all native plants. It's a little bit of a nature preserve. My next governor has 45 acres. Together, we have a little bit of a safe park. And I would just like to preserve as much of that as we possibly can. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Not seen any more papers turned. Does anybody have another? Anybody else wish to speak?
May I, please?
No. Yep. We're going to close the public forum at 6:06. Sheriff, you want to call the orders?
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, the Chatham County is in session. It's Monday, June 30th, 2025.
Let us pray. Thank you, Lord, for your love and mercy. As we celebrate our 249th birthday as a nation, this July 4th. Keep everyone safe on the 4th. And also thank you for those who have fought for our freedoms and those who served today to keep us safe and free. Lord, help us tonight as a commission to make the right decisions for our county. Lord, watch over our county, state, and federal leaders as they lead our county, state, and nation. Lord, thank you for all you do for us in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Would you join in blessed allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a roll call, please.
David Anderson.
Here.
Carlton Blacker.
Here.
Randy Noem.
Here.
Tim Williamson.
Here.
Chris Gilmore.
Here.
BJ Hudson.
Here.
Bill Powers.
Here.
Walter Weekly.
Here.
Diana Lovell.
Here.
Eugene Evans.
Here.
James Hitchpath.
Here.
Mike Breedlove.
Here.
Twelve present, zero absent. Have a forum. We have a motion to approve the agenda with some changes. I think we got, let me tell you the changes. We have under, we're going to put under elected officials a recognition. Mayor, do you have anything you want to?
Yes, we need to, we need to do that. And then in my area, we've got 13, 14 items, actually. Item eight, vote for Mayor Searah to disagree with the Chatham County school system and Chatham County.
No. We're talking about the changes on the agenda. Is that what you're reading off? Your changes? Okay, I'm sorry. Sorry.
That's, all right. I need to pull that tonight. It's not, it's not ready. We're still hammering that out. The second item, ask that we pull, it's kind of a hundred of states already been taken care of, both of the Mayor Searah contract between Chatham County and Judge Wright. We've already got that hammered out where we are asking tonight for the Searah RT builder. So item eight and 10, and then with all the finer contracts acting, we're asking to rescind all the contracts replaced with amended versions, especially in Houston's bringing in park protection.
And then I believe under budget, we're going to strike items two and three, add number 13, budget amendments for general debt services. Anything else, Ms. Undering? And then we're going to add one more on the consent counter for a notary. Anything else? Motion to approve by Mr. Anderson with the changes. I have a second. Second by Ms. Lovell. Any questions? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Agenda's approved. Approval of minutes for regular session, May 19th, 2025. We have a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Blacker. Second by Ms. Lovell. Any questions? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Comments from elected officials. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Chairman. I sent out earlier an email to all the Commissioners requesting that we approve a resolution recognizing a fine lady who has been serving Chatham County school system for the last eight years. Matter of fact, tonight, that's over eight years. So I'm asking for approval. I'll have you nice and present that to Dr. Kathy Beck.
I have a motion, Ms. Lovell, second by Mr. Breedlove. All in favor say aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Chairman. And Tim, I gotta, I gotta thank Tim. He did all the background work. We made all the facts and all the content over there. So the majority of this is coming from Tim. But it's coming from all of us, as you saw unanimously. You know how rare this group is? I, I just gotta say, we started on the same day. We started on the same day. I think we were going out together, but somebody jumped ship. Doesn't understand Pat, our kid, saying, we had a pact. We had a pact. But anyway, we wish you all the best. But anyway, I want you to, so bless me, we're relying on you, please. Look at this. We had a boxer on the head one page. You know, it's okay.
I beat the boxer.
You beat the boxer. Yeah, you beat the boxer. All right. Chatham County Commission recognizes Dr. Kathy Beck. Whereas Dr. Kathy Beck relocated from Colorado to Chatham County to accept the director of schools post on July 1st, 2017. And whereas, Dr. Beck has been a champion for public education, tirelessly advocating for students, educators, our community. And whereas, our district's leader, her focus has been on improving student achievement, successfully managing school finances, and building community partnerships. And whereas she developed and implemented a five-year strategic plan, a first for our school district. And whereas, Dr. Beck implemented an honor band program for our middle and high school students. Whereas she guided our district through the COVID-19 pandemic and successfully oversaw the spending of more than $6 million in elementary and secondary school emergency relief pandemic funds. And whereas, she created the Chatham County Education Hall of Fame, which honors individuals who have significant contributions to the growth and development of education in our district. And whereas, in her tenure, secured the funding with support from the school board and county commission for a new district transportation facility and four new restroom concession stands to enhance our athletic facilities. And whereas, she created opportunities that allow our district to be recognized by the Tennessee Department of Education as a best for all district, leading 360 district, and exemplary Tennessee all four district. And whereas, Dr. Beck led the work to earn our district to be named a level five district by the Tennessee Department of Education. A level five designation is the highest a district can attain. And our district has earned this honor for two consecutive years, '23, '24, as well as the '24, '25 school years. Whereas she worked with Special Olympics Tennessee to ensure that our district was the first in Tennessee to fully implement the unified champion schools program in all its schools to be designated as a unified champion district. And whereas, she helped implement many successful programs and projects, including the Farm to School, book Steve Buss, civic speed, and innovative scholars, which expands the learning opportunities for academically advanced students. And whereas, she started the Kindness Groves Here program, in which every school partnered with a Chatham County organization, business, or agency. And whereas, she spearheaded to turn our school system back to national accreditation, ensuring top standards and quality in local education. Whereas, Dr. Beck launched the Grow Your Home program through a partnership with Nashville State Community College and Austin Peay State University. This program allows current support staff to receive a little to no cost education while preparing them to become a teacher in our district. And whereas, Dr. Beck has been champion for career and technical education courses and programs through innovative school models, funding. Our district has implemented middle school exploratory programs and expanded high school programs of study. And whereas, she has helped bridge communication between the school board and county commission, resulting in positive results for our students. And after eight years of leading the Chatham County school district with vision, focus, and stability, Dr. Kathy Beck is retiring on June 30th. Therefore, being resolved by the Chatham County Commission and county mayor, recognize and thank Dr. Kathy Beck for her dedication and impact on our school system, including the staff, board, and most importantly, our students. We wish you only the best in whatever direction life takes you in the years to come. You will always hold a special place in the heart and soul of Chatham County.
Today has been a really tough day on me emotionally, and I've tried really hard to hold it together. It's for the day of love lapses, you know, last time I parked, like last time I put my key in the door. This is the first time. Y'all are so amazing here in Chatham County. I, I want to tell you, I truly, every day of this job, I pray to God, please give me wisdom to do what needs to be done. I did not do this job on my own at all. I didn't get here on my own, and I didn't do this job on my own. This was a God thing. And so I want to give credit where credit is due. He has this camp, this wonderful camp, and it is so remarkable. But it's because of all of you and your dedication to this beautiful place that we get to call home. And, you know, I just, I'm so blessed to have the relationships that we've created. And I just so thank all of you. This has been a collaborative effort. And everything that was not here, you all have had a big part of. My school board, oh my God, they're just setting it to the best. My team that I work with every single day, setting it to the best. I, I can not handpick across our nation better people. I want even more. Brilliant, brilliant education work in this district, run this district, and stay around. It's going to be remarkable. And she'll have four pages, but I have two. Thank you all so much. I will be forever grateful and blessed to have spent the eight years. And I, I'm amazing. I'm still in here. And so I'll commit to whatever I can do to put my effort towards being a great citizen and give it back to this community. Thank you so much.
Franklin?
Yes, sir. Public notice agenda for June 30th, 2025, as advertised in newspaper of local distribution. The Chatham County Commission will meet on June 30th, 2025, at 6:00 PM in the general sessions courtroom in Ashland City, Tennessee. The following items will be heard. One, American Engineering Engineers, Inc., requesting a zone change from C1 to I1 for map 65 parcel 98 and map 65 parcel 98.02. Property is located at 346 Angler Lane in the 5th Voting District and is not in a special flood hazard area. That request has been withdrawn by the applicant. Item two, Christian Dalton requesting a zone change from E1 to R1 for map 93 parcel 10. Property is located at 4531 Sears Road in the 5th Voting District and is not in a special flood hazard area. Item three, Bobby Hackett requesting a zone change from C3 to agriculture for map 48 parcel 13.05. Property is located on Chapman's Borough Road in the 4th Voting District and is not in a special flood hazard area. Franklin Wilkinson, Director, Chatham County Building Department.
Now's when I should have called you all up to speak, but is there anybody else that wishes to speak now at the public hearing for the, either one of these items? Yes, ma'am. Come, if you don't mind, come to the microphone.
Christian Dalton, I won't read it if everything we talked about last week, but I just would take a touch on a couple of the relevant points. One being that the state code requires UGB, which this is in urban growth, defined by Chatham County and the state of Tennessee, that is a territory that a reasonable intruder person would project as a likely sign of high density, commercial, industrial, and residential growth. That's the state code. Chatham County Code goes on to say that the one requirement established in public chapter 1101 that is particularly pertinent to the establishment and operation of zoning law within the county is the requirement established in section 6-58-107 Tennessee County statute. After a growth plan is so proved, all land use decisions made by the legislative body and a municipality or a county's planning commission shall be consistent with the growth plan. That language that we seem pretty decisive. All decisions shall be consistent with the growth plan. UGB sets aside territory for higher density. The purpose of the UGB is to encourage growth into those areas. Since this is in the UGB, state code and Chatham County Code both align with this request 100%. And then again, just touching on exhibit that I prepared and sent to each of you, it will not impede the progress. There are 79 non-conforming lots within one mile of this parcel. Every one of those should be zoned or appointed if they were consistent with the zoning and the carriage or the lawn. So I would, I would so appreciate your support for my application since it does align with both the state and the county government.
Thank you. See anybody else wish to speak under the public hearing of this matters? Yes, sir.
I was told that there were some non-conforming lots in that area, but none have been made that way for decades. I was here at the last meeting and some, somebody with, with the county said that there had not been a non-conforming lot there in that area for at least 20 years. So these, these non-conforming lots were from a long time ago. I don't know what the situation was then. But what I do understand is that you're supposed to have three acres to build a house on. If it has city water, at least four acres if it does not have a city water. But this lot, and no, no bill will to be on whatsoever. I don't know where, I have, have a problem there at all. But this lot is a conforming lot right now. If it's still, in two, it will be two non-conforming lots. That would be another situation. It's like, like Lee said, much to prevent other people with property around there to just say, hey, I've got 12 acres. I want to build 12 houses. You know, they're going to be here saying the same thing. So at some point in time, we have to say, let's just do what the rules say. One house per acre.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in a public hearing? Yes, sir.
I apologize. I look my good. It's Victor's argument, but you know, we have a zoning board or reading, they have educated, well-known recommendations in this body. And I hope you respect that. And again, I just want to reiterate, this is not a community that needs to be high density. And so, thank you.
Anybody else? Close the public hearing at 6:25. Franklin?
Item two, Christian Dalton requesting a zone change from E1 to R1 for map 93 parcel 10. Property is located at 4531 Sears Road in the 5th Voting District and is not in a special flood hazard area.
Have a motion?
I have a motion to defer till next month. I need to get a little more clarification on conforming and non-conforming in the urban growth district because I thought I knew what it meant. And I just need some more clarification on it.
So, Mr. Chairman? Yes, sir. So the minimum lot size allowed in the E1 zoning is three acres with public water. If you don't have public water, the minimum lot size allowed is five acres. The request here is to rezone to R1 so the proposed new lot would be conforming. It's not a special exception or variance. That's not the request for a conditional use. It's a request to rezone that particular parcel to be able to divide it into two lots.
So would they be R1 lots?
They would be R1 if it was rezoned. And it would be conforming at that point.
Right now, are they conforming? Is it a conforming lot right now?
It is because it's greater than three acres.
It's conforming as, what is it right now?
Is E1, E1, yes, ma'am.
There's a motion on the floor, Greg.
Yes.
I have a motion to defer.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hitchpath. Questions?
For the E1, R1, round the.
That's, that particular zoning map that's on the screen is zoomed out. And you can see that pretty much everything around there is E1 from the map.
So would it be a spot zone if it's going to be approved?
I guess it depends on how you might classify a spot zone.
Are there any other R1s around?
There's no other R1s around here.
What about the, what about with the urban growth plan? What is?
It is in the Pgram urban growth boundary.
So how does that affect it? Because that makes it sound like we need to approve some growth, but not all growth.
Well, we're getting into some legal areas. It may be beneficial to have our legal counsel comment on that.
Just wish you had food. Did this, did this, did this, something?
Yes.
Was the vote on there?
There was seven yes to deny, one abstained, and one absence.
Seven to deny.
Right.
Seven to deny.
Yes.
They were considering a spot zoning, correct?
From the point of view of looking at the map and, and not seeing any R1 near it. Mr. Martin?
In terms of the growth plan, both the current zoning of E1 and the requested rezone to R1 are both allowed in the county. So neither one, neither the existing nor the proposed zoning would be contrary to the growth plan.
Franklin, I was hearing this, I was a little confused about the three acres minimum. Something about the ranches, those lots out there where I live, they average one and a half to two and a half. they average one and a half to two and a half acres.
Right.
The majority is about six and a half acres, so is that following because of R1?
No, they're still E1, but you'll find a lot of non-conforming lots that are less than three acres in the E1 zoning. When the county took in zoning, they took in large areas, so that's not unusual, unusual to find that.
There were also, like you said, as lots of one and a half to two and a half acres.
Right, and I'm not sure we had zoning in place at that time, but the ranch ads are zoned, for the most part, E1. And a lot of them are non-conforming.
That puts my house, I guess, is on you and that acres.
Yeah, so you're less than three acres.
Any other questions? So a motion on the floor to defer for 30 days? We have a second. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Diana Lovell?
Yes.
Eugene Evans?
Yes.
James Hitchpath?
Yes.
Mike Breedlove?
Yes.
David Anderson?
Yes.
Carlton Blacker?
No.
Randy No?
Yes.
Tim Williamson?
Yes.
Chris Gilmore?
Yes.
B.J. Hudson?
Yes.
Bill Powers?
No.
Walter Weekly?
Yes.
Anybody wish to change their vote? A 10 yes, two no. Motion carries to defer, or to, yeah, defer for 30 days?
Bobby Hackett requesting a zone change from C3 to agriculture for map 48 parcel 13.05. Property is located on Chapman's Borough Road in the 4th Voting District and is in a special flood hazard area.
Who said that? Motion by Mr. Powers?
Second.
Second by Mr. Weekly. Any questions on this item? Roll call, please.
Bill Powers?
Yes.
Walter Weekly?
Yes.
Diana Lovell?
Yes.
Eugene Evans?
Yes.
James Hitchpath?
Yes.
Mike Breedlove?
Yes.
David Anderson?
Yes.
Carlton Blacker?
Yes.
Randy No?
Yes.
Tim Williamson?
Yes.
Chris Gilmore?
Yes.
B.J. Hudson?
Yes.
Anybody wish to change their vote? 12 yes, zero no. Motion carries. That's all I have, unless anybody has questions. Any questions? All right, budget.
I have one, budget amendments due on purpose, school transportation, 100,056 dollars and 29 cents. Um, constructions, full services, and operation of the construction service is 551,651 dollars and 68 cents. Education vote, four yes, zero no, absent. Budget vote, five yes, zero no, zero absent. Funding source, summer running grants. Next item, industry cleanup amendments, category, 322,160 dollars. Budget, uh, sorry, board education vote, six yes, zero no, zero absent. Funding source, unused, budget funds.
Motion? Motion by Mr. Gilmore?
Second.
Second by Mr. Anderson. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Chris Gilmore?
Yes.
B.J. Hudson?
Yes.
Bill Powers?
Yes.
Walter Weekly?
Yes.
Diana Lovell?
Yes.
Eugene Evans?
Yes.
James Hitchpath?
Yes.
Mike Breedlove?
Yes.
David Anderson?
Yes.
Carlton Blacker?
Yes.
Randy No?
Yes.
Tim Williamson?
Yes. Anybody wish to change their vote? It's 12 yes, zero no. Motion carries.
I have four, budget amendments, highway, highway administration and other charges, 4,310 dollars. Budget votes, five yes, zero no, zero absent. Funding source, unused, budget funds.
Motion by Mr. Powers?
Second.
Second by Mr. Evans. Any questions? Roll call.
Bill Powers?
Yes.
Walter Weekly?
Yes.
Diana Lovell?
Yes.
Eugene Evans?
Yes.
James Hitchpath?
Yes.
Mike Breedlove?
Yes.
David Anderson?
Yes.
Carlton Blacker?
Yes.
Randy No?
Yes.
Tim Williamson?
Yes.
Chris Gilmore?
Yes.
B.J. Hudson?
Yes.
Anybody wish to change their vote? 12 yes, zero no. Motion carries.
I have five, 2025, 26 fire tax levy. Proposed rate for Chatham County Fire District is .1753 and Harbor Bridge, .0581.
I have a motion to approve of Ms. Lovell.
Second.
Second by Mr. Anderson. Any question on the fire tax levy?
What was the amount, said rate? What was the amount of fire tax levy?
Prior to, fire tax levy prior to this year?
Oh, no, this year.
Um, currently, the, the rate that is strictly 2425 for the fire district was .1395, which would be a decrease of .0358, and there's no change on the bridge.
Any other questions?
I, uh, I'm still have a problem with the fire tax on, uh, unapproved farmland. Farmers paying the same thing for having made another farm as somebody does for having made another home in subdivision. It's just not right. Uh, I've argued that ever since fire taxes have been in existence, and, uh, I wish we could did something about that. Because if you go have made another farm, that's not likely, as unlikely as you are to need, uh, emergency services or if you are having made another home in subdivision. That's the, that's a problem I have with it.
Anybody else? Roll call.
Diana Lovell?
Yes.
Eugene Evans?
Yes.
James Hitchpath?
No.
Mike Breedlove?
Yes.
David Anderson?
Yes.
Carlton Blacker?
Yes.
Randy No?
No.
Tim Williamson?
Yes.
Chris Gilmore?
Yes.
B.J. Hudson?
Yes.
Bill Powers?
Yes.
Walter Weekly?
No.
Anyone wish to change their vote? It's nine yes, three no. Motion carries.
I have six, 25, 26 budget documents, recreation document, and nonprofit document, um, as recommended by a budget committee, for a total increase of overall of 16.15 cents, includes all county cuts.
Motion by Mr. Gilmore, second by Ms. Lovell. Any discussion, comments, questions? So this will be approving Oliver County budgets, school budgets, as presented. All right, motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Chris Gilmore?
Yes.
B.J. Hudson?
Yes.
Bill Powers?
Yes.
Walter Weekly?
No.
Diana Lovell?
Yes.
Eugene Evans?
Yes.
James Hitchpath?
No.
Mike Breedlove?
Yes.
David Anderson?
Yes.
Carlton Blacker?
Yes.
Randy No?
No.
Tim Williamson?
Yes.
Anybody wish to change their vote? Nine yes, three no. Motion carries.
I have seven, 25, 26 tax levy, the total proposed increase of all is 16.15 cents, as recommended by a budget committee, for a total rate of 1.7540.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Anderson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gilmore. This is approving the tax levy. Any questions? Roll call, please.
David?
Nope, sorry, I didn't see, hear you.
I have, I just want to make a few statements. A lady in my district, uh, living off of her husband's social security, and, uh, they're probably went saving a little money these since past. And she tells me her mom, she has to go into her savings account. She said, you know, I should not need a tax increase. What am I, what am I to tell her? You know, last year we told her, oh, it's only a month and something else. This year we're going to tell her that's, uh, what, uh, sixty, seventy dollars more. Uh, what we're going to tell her next year?
You can tell her that next year, that's the last year.
Amen.
You don't, you don't think we're level taxing?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, anybody who's dug that, I'm, I don't run that.
Kind of wrong. In my district, I have a lot of farms. Uh, and I, I have no first land, uh, that the vital farms down there have seen a 70% decrease in their payments. Not just one, across the board. People live, have to leave farms, go work, and, you know, go, we're taxing, we're upping their taxes. And they seen their farms, uh, the real price will go up 10, 15, 20, 25 percent. So they go tax increase of, uh, it would have been status quo budget last year. And how many, how many department heads come into the budget department, who, who addresses to, how many department heads come into the budget committee and ask for status quo budget, not the increase? Just give me the, uh, increase that we're getting here. How many, how many department heads did that? Any others?
Mr. Mayor? There was one who didn't ask for anything?
Yeah.
Got one back here with a hand raised, but I've one over here. So, you know, my hat's off too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. But that makes me proud that I can tell that lady, you know, there's two offices right there that need to do it. Uh, we can spend, we can spend the fire out of money. Uh, to regain, I'm not against giving bonuses, but we give bonuses, and then we up the tax rate, 16, 16.12 thousand cents. I just have a hard time, I have a hard time doing this, seeing this year after year after year. So, vote, vote to do it, vote for them all to take it over, savings account until it's gone. That's all I have to say.
I feel the same way, Walter. I mean, I, I was talking to a lady the other day in Alabama that's probably got more money than I've ever thought about having in Alabama. And about the same time, we both said the same thing. This commission focuses on stuff and spends money like a bunch of drunk sailors. Spend a whole bunch of, but, I mean, it, 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 it just, I mean, there's got to be an end somewhere to put these people like Walter talking about this lady. I mean, I know, uh, Ms. Elsie and all, I mean, you know, I mean, there's got to be an end, no. I mean, we've, we've talked about giving them a tax break, but yet, when you talk about that, the trustee is saying, she's got to have more people. So, you know, that's just going to cost the budget more and all. I mean, somewhere, we, you've got to have a, a stopping point and say, hey, let, let's take care of the people and all. I mean, this budget has got more money in it for dogs and cats than it does for old people. Now, that's a shame. I mean, it's, it's a shame that a county would spend more money on dogs and cats than you do old people. That's all I got to say.
I'll say, I'll say this, Mr. Chairman. I agree with Walter, and these guys are, one thing I'd love to have, we had three years of no tax increase. Of course, this jail out here, it's cost a lot, and have to do that. But being on the budget committee for the last six years, I promise you, I go in there every meeting, what can we cut? What can we cut? What can we deny? And we have done this for years, telling folks they can't have this position. 911, several businesses they, they were, and we've denied. And we've had to make cuts. And I, if it was up to me, it'd be a zero budget. Because of the salary study and uncontrollables that we can't control, it's hard to do that. But when I go in there, I make that decision because I fight for the constituents in the first district and all the Chatham County. And I know the rest of this folks on the budget committee. So we're not going in to spend like drunken sailors or anything else. We work hard to try and get this budget down. This budget was at 34 cents when we started, and we cut, and we cut. And Sharon Moon, Williamson, Chris Gilmore, Diana, all of us on the budget, we work hard. And we don't come in and saying, what can we just give? We've had to deny folks and stuff, and, and maybe they have legitimate needs, but we can't do this. We've got to cut this down, and we cut it down, we cut, just like the year before. And the three years that we had no tax increase was, was awesome. But because of this, the salary study and the other, uh, uncontrollable stuff, you have to do all you can, but you have to take care of the uncontrollables. And, and we're, believe me, not overpricing them, all our folks and stuff as far as going against other counties. But as a budget committee, I stand up for every person that's on it, that we go every year, and I, and I promise you, I'll work for you and cut every single penny and every position I can.
Could I say one something else?
Sure.
But, Mr. Anderson, you're one of the three people that's on the budget committee that I asked at our workshop what a thousand dollars was on there, and none, none, none of you three would answer me. Ms. Bat's had to answer for everybody and all, and she sent out a, thank you.
And that goes to...
So, so that, that makes me think that some things are getting passed on this budget that you're not seeing.
Mr. No, when you bring it up and nobody answered you, is that we don't have an answer for what the tribal line is. Tribal line is what each individual person put in there for their, for their group, and their shift that we're required to pay for. You can't make these people go to these meetings and not pay for them to go. That's required, and we have to do that. And most of our employees say, I have a horse. And you want to talk about if we give more to animals and we do our elderly vote? I would disagree with you there, because we don't have anything with the county funds for the elderly in this community. Don't be fun. Do we have a facility? Do we pay people to work? We have a facility, we pay for animal control. So don't sit over there and say that we give more to animals and we do the elderly in this community. That's not, that's not a fair and accurate statement to say to the rest of this county. It'd be different if we had a facility, if we had county employees that took care of elderly in this community. Then, then that might be a fair and accurate statement. But be careful how you say that, because that's not, that's not a true and accurate statement you can put out to the public right now.
Well, I, I appreciate what you're saying, though, but we, we should be doing something for the elderly.
And you say we should, but the way you make that statement and walk away from that, that makes it sound like that we don't care about the elderly in our community, and I will stand toe-to-toe with anybody, and I don't care for anybody in this community. So just be careful how you say that.
Would you, would you vote to, uh, spree the, uh, tax on the elderly? There's, there's a gentleman been coming here trying to get that done.
And, and we, we plainly said that after the, after we become the budget, we can talk about that, we, we will be willing to entertain a meeting. That's what we so desire to do. If they can present something that makes sense, we can make it work. However, I'm going to sit down this evening, just like I feel like the rest of this committee body is willing to do. But it needs to make sense, and it needs to be financially responsible for all of us.
We do have to answer, we, we do have to take into account the actions.
Mr. No, we got, our county budget is, I think this is it, 77 pages? Mr. Knowles, we got, our county budget is, I think this is it, seventy-seven pages. I don't think anybody on this budget committee has looked at every single line item. We look at what's requested new that comes to us. Uh, and as far as not doing anything for the elderly, we have, uh, brought in more people for EMS. I would say that's, that's something to help anyone, especially elderly people. When they call nine-one-one, I think they want somebody to show up, whether it be the Sheriff's Department, the ambulance service, fire truck. And we don't, we don't spend like drunken sailors. Let me ask you a question, hold on. If you called the governor right now that you're good friends with, and you said, how much do y'all spend on state cars? Could he tell you? I bet you couldn't. We don't know every single line item, but we look over the request, and we'll deny if we can't. Our uncontrollables is how many cents, Mr. Mayor? Items that we can't control, how much it is, insurance, electric bills, water bills. We voted to, you wasn't on the, we voted to build this jail. Did we not think that we were gonna have to put people in there, pay insurance, water? I mean, I know your grocery bill went up at your house, light bill, so does it with the county. I mean, I think it's a slap into our, our employees' face, we, we, we voted to give them a raise last year. Implement the salary stuff, something, well, we gotta fund that. Yeah, that's a lot of money, and I, I don't wanna pay the taxes, I don't wanna pay no more taxes no more than anyone. But to continue for the county to improve and do things for our citizens, I don't wanna, if I go down there and buy my tags, I don't wanna wait three hours. I don't want them to be closed an extra day a week. I go to take off my trash, I wanna be able to go there for the days that they're, they're supposed to be open. The only way is to, to cut services, that's it. And I'm not up for cutting any services. And I hate it, I, if my parents were still alive, I'd hate that they'd have to pay this, but if we do the tax freeze, someone's gonna make that up. It's not just gonna go away. Them taxes are gonna get spread out among the other people. So that's something we're gonna look at next month, but I've been on the commission for several years, and, I mean, we did have some years that we didn't have a tax increase. And that may be costing us in the long run, but, you know, it's, we gotta do what we, we have to do. I don't know what, any other way to put it. I've invited you to the budget meetings, you could've sit, you could've sound ring her office, or answer the question, any question you have. Call and ask, any of us, you can call, finance department, they'll tell you, just like I asked her tonight on several items she had questions about. She knows it. That's, that's what they do. They deal with it every single day. We don't, you know that. We're a part-time position. I mean, we're, I think, I think we've done very well.
Well, we've got a, we've got a senior citizen building forever, which way it is, up here and all.
Yeah.
And the county gives no money to help him. I mean, I know it's city, and the reason, and all, I've been told that they don't ask. Wasn't gonna give nothing, the county's told.
We look at the back of that budget packet, and I really do, Mr. Chairman.
I have it right here.
If you're doing the back of that budget packet, we can talk about art, we can talk about all their places, and they come, they don't ask. We take, we start it up, or we can deal.
We thank a fourteen thousand dollar donation to Mid-Cumberland Human Resources for compliance meals on wheels and transportation services for senior citizens and disabled citizens. And we also donate nine thou, uh, sorry, nineteen hundred to the Art Community Resource Center.
Okay, anybody else?
Question?
Roll text it.
Any other question?
Question?
All right, roll call, please.
David Anderson?
Yes.
Calton Blacker?
Yes.
Randy No?
No.
Tim Williamson?
Yes.
Chris Gilmore?
Yes.
B.J. Hudson?
Yes.
Bill Powers?
Yes.
Walter Weekly?
No.
Diana Lovell?
Yes.
Eugene Evans?
Yes.
James Hedgepath?
No.
Mike Breedlove?
Yes.
Anybody wish to change your vote? Nine yes, three no. Motion carries.
I need a number I have, thirteen, added, um, study, uh, budget amendment for general net service. Other general administration, six thousand dollars, voter free vote, four yes, zero no, one absent, coming towards general net service.
Motion, Ms. Lovell?
Yes.
Who said that? Second one, Mr. Hudson. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Diana Lovell?
Yes.
Eugene Evans?
Yes.
James Hedgepath? Mike Breedlove?
Yes.
David Anderson?
Yes.
Calton Blacker?
Yes.
Randy No?
Stain.
Tim Williamson?
Yes.
Chris Gilmore? B.J. Hudson?
Yes.
Bill Powers?
Yes.
Walter Weekly?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Ten yes.
James Hedgepath?
Yes.
Oh, he said yes, sorry.
Eleven yes, zero no, and one abstain. Motion carries. All right, you see your information items in your packet. Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna let, if you don't mind, I'll let Mr. Greer give us an update, since he wasn't here Monday.
Uh, you have a small fire, we're, uh, the air conditioner on in the head, like, I'm running it to get the humidity down in the jail, uh, parking lot is, uh, supposed to be at final grade, uh, to be painted next couple weeks, put the base down, and then put the top coat later. They did a job, concrete in the back backyard, leave, and then the next couple weeks, and between the building, by time break, the sidewalks are going to, uh, we're scheduled to, uh, move unit base in sometime. Like, I'm over, the, the jail in operation, uh, shut this courtroom down. We've got it scheduled December thirteenth to January first, for the tag, and we'll get all of the, the new courtrooms, and, uh, and all of this part. Maybe picking that up, and maybe if we get in the jail, we can meet back together, look at some of what we're doing in the existing, existing building before we start actual demo, make sure everything we need.
It's looking good.
There's been a lot going on, uh, courtrooms, all the, all, uh, all the doors, uh, removed, toilets, about seven, ten, half, a lot of working all over the ground, so there's a lot that, any questions on?
Anybody have any question, Mr. Greer? All right, sorry to make you sit, I was done zooming through.
Oh, Candy's present.
All right, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, several items have brought your attention this evening. First item is voted the mayor's signature on amended contract between Chedon County and Williamson County for juvenile detention centers. Second item is voted the mayor's signature on food services agreement between Chedon County and Trinity Services Group Incorporated. Item number three, voted the mayor's signature on virtual academy solution agreement with, uh, Dino. Next item is rescind Parker River, uh, fire contract on place with updated amended fire contract as we spoke about last week. Vote for the mayor's signature on a, uh, amendment agreement to the waste transportation agreement between Chedon County and Mr. Bolt Steen and Illinois Corporation, NBI. Next item of consideration, voted the mayor's signature on a BIS digital for audio, video in the new courtrooms, as well as the old courtrooms. Next item is voted the mayor's signature on lease agreement between Chedon County and Kingston Springs Church of Christ. Vote for the mayor's signature on contract between Chedon County and Rufus Johnson Associates for Sycamore Square renovations, his architect. Vote for the mayor's signature on contract with RT Builders for Chedon County maintenance building. And vote for the mayor's signature on Axon contract with Sheriff's Department. Vote for the mayor's signature on Chedon County sanitary landfill permit number, uh, or the expansion. And then, as we spoke earlier on the, amending the, uh, agenda tonight, would be to rescind the fire contracts, especially Kingston Springs, and replace it with amended, uh, a new contract, which we'll come back and amend later in, in that contract. So more or less, all the departments come out and put the amended back in on the fire contracts.
We have a motion on the floor? Motion to...
Throw them all.
About a second, second one, motion for Mr. Gilmore, second one, Mr. Anderson. Any questions? We're voting to approve them all. Roll call, please.
Chris Gilmore?
Yes.
B.J. Hudson?
Yes.
Bill Powers?
Yes.
Walter Weekly?
Yes.
Diana Lovell?
Yes.
Eugene Evans?
Yes.
James Hedgepath?
Yes.
Mike Breedlove?
Yes.
David Anderson?
Yes.
Calton Blacker?
Yes.
Randy No?
Yes.
Tim Williamson?
Yes. Any wish to change your vote? Twelve yes, zero no, zero absent. Motion carries.
That's all I had, Chairman.
Uh, Mr. Black?
I don't have anything, but I'm happy to entertain any question.
Any questions? All right, moving along. Looking down through here. Any of our elected officials like to speak? Anything? Ms. Sheriff? Dr. Beck?
I, I, I want to, I want to, I'm glad that you, that you, you take it very seriously, you're physically responsible to, uh, our, our, our community, so thank you so much, and I, I, I love you. Special tag, you're it, girlfriend.
Anybody have any questions?
Well, we're gonna miss you, and we're pretty shy, I know you pay your political taxes, and, uh, we're, we're, we're gonna miss you. I thought you was a little bit more important. I know it takes, I'm a mom watching, but we know it's nice, and we're very young, and we like you for all of what you've done.
Dr. Beck, would you change in your phone number? All right, anybody else? All right, uh, UT Extension?
I don't know how I'm gonna call Dr. Beck either, but, um, at the extension office, Dr. Beck, we're extremely grateful to the relationship we have with the school board, and, um, not just the program at all, but what we do. And I know we're close with Casey, I think I had four kids close to her classroom, and she was in an elementary school, so we go way back, so I'm excited about that relationship, too. Um, like I said last week, we're fully staffed now, we hired Miss April Bernstein from South Dakota. Um, she has experience in the extension there, and I just said Tennessee's been calling her name, and she has already fallen in love with Chedon County. I've taken her around and met, uh, she's met a lot of you, she wants to come to the commission meeting next month. Um, again, we thank you for your support and your passion for the budget. One thing that everyone asked us when we were at our interviews was, how does your county support you? And I was so proud to be able to say they support us extremely well. Yes, there's things we still want, but you meet all of our needs that we have between you and the University of Tennessee, so for the bottom of our hearts, thank you. We've had some huge successes this summer, um, a lot of it with the 4H program. Um, if you haven't gotten to know my coworker, Amos, he's absolutely fabulous, and he's just that energy that the kids love, and he's doing amazing things. Um, we've had over two hundred and fifty kids probably at 4H camp. We had a school, or no, he's actually in the detective, right? Tony Pierce came to camp with us, and we thank the Sheriff's Department for that, and he helps us, um, to build all this thing when we take our kids to camp. We've had about two hundred and fifty kids at various camps, and the one thing I'm most proud of, about thirty-five to forty of them go on some kind of scholarship because of the fundraising that we are able to do and, um, the support that Mr. John Mayfield had left for us when it comes to that sort of thing. We are wide open with our summer funding. We've had our wildlife day tomorrow, we're doing some cupcake decorating, so, um, if you're hungry and you wanna come check them out tomorrow about noon, we should be done. Um, I don't know how many will be edible by the time we're done, because it's kids decorating them. But huge, um, huge fun things going on at the extension office with these kids this summer. Um, Amos just got back from electric camp where we had, um, CMC is very supportive of that program since our kids go to electric camp. We partnered with a chamber on the rodeo, um, which has been out and about doing a million different things. Nick Wainick, our ad agent, has, um, been out and about visiting all the farmers, getting to know everyone, and, um, just getting in and out with his educational programming, too, so we, we, we thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? VSO, ECD? Beerboard? Market Service? Council of Provisions?
Well, yes, Mr. Chairman, we have one, uh, for the season. Um, it is for the, uh, coffee terminal, but the bottom of the health department is where it was flooded, destroyed the carpet, of course, carpet was worn over the last twenty years. For the price, uh, vinyl floor, um, it'd be just better to just do polished concrete, it'd be the same price as if it ever flooded again, the mess wouldn't be as severe, we just mop it up. And that, that amount is three thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars. I can put that in a motion for a vote this evening.
Shall we have a motion? Second? Second one, Mr. Hudson. Any questions on this? Roll call, please.
Calton Blacker?
Yes.
Randy No?
Yes.
Tim Williamson?
Yes.
Chris Gilmore?
Yes.
B.J. Hudson?
Yes.
Bill Powers?
Yes.
Walter Weekly?
Yes.
Diana Lovell?
Yes.
Eugene Evans?
Yes.
James Hedgepath?
Yes.
Mike Breedlove?
Yes.
David Anderson?
Yes.
Anybody wish to change your vote? Twelve yes, zero no. Motion carries. Count of rules? Roden Bridge?
Yes, I'm big.
Any other new business? Consent counter, motion approved?
Approved.
Oh, sorry, hold on.
So much of the event will be really heavy, huh?
No, hold on. We're on the consent counter, we have a motion, uh, with the addition to, uh, Ms. Brenda Wade. We have a motion for Mr. Weekly, second? Who's second? Ms. Lovell? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Announcements.
Just wanted to let you know that we're, uh, Gaywood Church, we're at our Fourth of July, it's, uh, it's pretty big. It's got bigger years, uh, it was just come Friday night, the first close school upgrade, and we have a little nice car, we have, uh, food, we're sharing, and so the black folks come to celebrate the Fourth.
Or you can come to people and squeeze all day long. Ours is just for now, theirs is all. Breakfast at ten, our beginning's at twelve, or like thirty, eleven?
Any, any special guests at the Four Days?
Special guest, Dr. Beck. And our best friend, our dear Marshall this year.
All right.